At a meeting of March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
No, I don't. Computer's having an issue, so.
And again, tonight, the minutes are being
One hour long, you get an hour.
Being taken by the video, so if everybody could, as they're speaking, please make sure that they're speaking into the microphones so that we can correctly do the minutes for tonight. All right, the first thing we have is a public hearing continued. It's on the application of George Ajami, three sixteen Tremont Street.
Chairman Mackey and board members, I'm Stuart Clark with Green Seal Environmental, representing Timeless Stonework and Mr. Ajami. I have with me tonight Roger Brooks, who is the design builder of the building, in case you guys had questions on finishes, looks, aesthetics. And I also brought Tyler Gilman from my office, just so he can see how planning board hearings go. Last we left it, there was, the board expressed some concerns in two main areas, I would say, in regards to the sixty-five-foot buffer and the aesthetics of the building. Since that time and going through the Conservation Commission, we ended up moving the building out of the sixty-five-foot buffer zone, so none of that building is in the buffer zone. We have received a order of conditions for the project through the Carver Conservation Commission. And we also have beefed up the front of the building aesthetically by adding additional window space and a front awning that almost runs across the entire front of the building. I, we did receive comments from Andy, I thought he might be here tonight. And he also was very thorough and found some waivers we forgot to ask for. I would like to ask for those at this time. First one would be section three-one-six-six. It's a photometric plan. On this project, we are only proposing, there's an existing lighting out there, but only, the new lighting will just be downlights or wall packs. They shine down the side of the building, they do not shine off the property. So we're asking for a waiver of that. Also, on the southern line, he said we should ask for a waiver for a twenty-foot landscape buffer. I think, I believe you, from the sidewalk, you'll see that half of that area is all wooded and overlooks a cranberry bog. You can't, when you walk down that fence line, you can't even see the road, so I don't think there's a public viewing avenue there. So we would ask a waiver of that landscape buffer on that side, too. The third waiver was section three-four-four-three. That calls for a berm around the entire parking lot. We're proposing to put some berm in front of the building at the landscape planters. And the rest of it, we are asking a waiver of berm. Two primary reasons. One, we're going to be transitioning from an asphalt surface to the gravel surface with traffic, can't really have a berm there. And as the water flows, I guess, northwesterly, there's a pond there, the water needs to get into that pond, and we don't want to capture it in the parking lot. Same to the back of the building, the water will run off the pavement and onto the gravel surface into the back detention pond. So we would ask for a waiver of that. The fourth one is a waiver we already asked for, was reduction in parking. But based on this board's concern relative to the parking number, we added four more spaces, so we're not asking for a reduction of thirty percent anymore, we're only asking for a reduction of eighteen percent. Other than that, I think that touches on all the points. If the board has any questions for me, Roger, or Tyler, please feel free.
And we do have a letter from the fire department that was included in our packet.
Do you need a fire suppression in there?
No, it's under, it's, it's, the use does not, I don't think we are, no, it has to have the right occupational use, right?
The use doesn't require at this, at this size, where under seventy-five-hundred square feet, sorry, Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction. With the use in the size build.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but.
Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction. The use of the building at seven, under seventy-five-hundred square feet, seventy-five-hundred square feet would trigger the requirement for fire suppression. The existing building is seventy-four-hundred square feet and change. The proposed building is the same exact size. I believe it's seventy-four-eigh.
Mr. Chairman?
I did not get a copy of the letter, is there any way I could get a copy?
Sure.
Just so I know what was.
Yeah, you could take a look at this.
Thank you. How high are your lights going to be on the building?
What's the eve height?
The eve height is eighteen foot nine, usually we set them closer to fifteen, sixteen feet.
Okay, because there is a, the max is eighteen foot?
Pull it here.
We typically set the lights at about sixteen feet at the top of the fixture. If there is a height requirement, we'll be more than happy to set them.
I believe it's fifteen feet outside of the parking areas.
More than happy to comply with that, it's not a problem.
I see there's a four-foot walkway on the south side of the building, bitumous walkway inside the sixty-five-foot zone, was that approved through CONCOM?
What page are you looking at, sir?
Oh, it must be page four, five, one, two, three, four, five.
We were not proposing any walkway along that edge.
Oh, it says.
Way in the front, that would be the west side.
Right, on the south side of the building, it says that there's a four-foot bitumous walkway. So that, that'll not happen?
I don't see it.
No, I think that's something different. It has bitumous walkway, but then there's a little arrow off on the left side of the box there, and it, and the arrow goes up to the front of the building. At the one that I'm looking at.
That's correct, there is no walk on that side of the buildings.
Okay, and that, that side of the building's not going to be used for trucking, transportation, storage, or any other sort of?
Well, it's a gravel area, yeah, they're still going to use that for access.
Within the sixty-five-foot zone?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that that's appropriate, because, again, you're supposed to have a twenty-five-foot setback at that point there along.
No, we're not actually proposing, we're proposing walk doors in the space, the fifteen-foot space between the two buildings?
Right, not, no, no, I'm talking about the south side of the new building, that's going to go back to grass?
We are going to put a new three-foot back grass strip along the fence line per recommendation of Andy.
Okay.
As a mitigation for this building construction.
My personal opinion is that should be prohibited from, from use, it's mostly inside the sixty-five-foot use zone, and it's well within the hundred, and I would recommend that be returned to some sort of local grass or some sort of issue. If, if you're going to look for reductions in the setback, that would be the best way to go. It looks like there's more than enough access around the buildings that that should.
When we met with, I believe it's Deputy Chief Boyle, I think it was in May, this past May, he was happy with the three sides of access for the fire trucks, so we're not trying to drive them down that side.
Right, right, but.
And the whole point of the project is, right now, there's a lot of stone product that's stored outside, and some of the new synthetic stones are affected by the UV light, so they need to be either rotated very quickly or kept inside, so that's the real point of this. And it's not to access around that side.
You're losing me, right, it's, so are you planning on using the south side of the building for storage or transport, cutting, cleaning?
Not, there's not going to be that active, it'd be, like he says, fire access, it's all gravel right now, there's nothing there. I think the board members saw on the sidewalk that it's a large fenced-in area with asphalt millings, so we're going to keep that open so that we can get fire access back there as a means of safety.
So you're saying that the south side will be used for fire access?
It'll, it'll just going to remain in the state of his end, sir.
No storage of materials? Right, so limited to fire access back there would, would be acceptable?
If they chose to use that space to put a fire out, I'm sure none of us would have an issue.
Yeah, I think the thing is, you have access to the front, you have access to the rear, you have access to the right side. I know that there was a point brought up that sometimes the fire department may not want to go put fire equipment between the buildings like that if there was a fire, so I mean, you do have access to four sides, but if you don't want to go between the buildings, you'd have to use, in an emergency, the south side.
The fifteen feet that we've got between the building was the code, and Lieutenant Chief Boyle was, or Deputy Chief Boyle was, was fine with, he actually suggested that if we pulled it, you know, he would be fine with the, the, whatever we could give him between the buildings, and knowing that Conservation would be much happier if we pulled the whole building out of the sixty-five-foot buffer.
So if I may, just a point of clarification. So, Connor, do you want, are we talking about putting a condition into the decision that says the south side of the building will be for exclusive use for fire access?
Yeah.
And no storage or work will happen in that area?
Exactly.
Something like that?
Yeah, because it's well within the prohibited zone, and it raises concerns.
That, it's easy enough to plug into the decision, I think.
What did Conservation say? This is more of a Conservation issue to me, but what did Conservation say about that? Anything?
No, they were, they were fine because we were giving the mitigation of turning some of that gravel back into a grassy area. Though I think, if I remember right, it was like five-hundred-and-eighty square feet we're going to be turning back into a natural area with loam and grassy, which, you know, provides the functions that you would expect to see in a buffer zone. So they were happy with that.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions?
I do, now, with the fire department, they were, they were fine, they feel they can access between the two, two buildings if they absolutely had to.
Yes.
And I would like to see some sort of safety measures, because I see a lot of emergency doors dump out into that space, some sort of, something that, so if there was a fire and people were running out of the building, there wouldn't be any concern of them running in front of a fire truck or emergency vehicle.
Could we do that with signage?
To, I, I would, I would ask Tom how he would feel about, because when those doors open, and you get them on both buildings, so all of a sudden, that eighteen-foot becomes three feet shorter on both sides, so now you're looking at, if people are coming out of buildings, you get twelve feet, and, you know.
Actually, it's less than that, he said it was fifteen feet between the two.
Well, fifteen is.
No, it's eighteen feet, he said we could.
Fifteen is code.
Code, okay.
And we, we pulled it over enough, originally it was twenty, and we pulled it.
I thought it was twenty at first.
We, we pulled it enough to get it out of the sixty-five.
Because, I mean, a fire truck's a good six, maybe seven feet wide.
So, if I may, so in the discussions I had with the fire department, they said that the space between the two buildings would likely not have any apparatus in it.
I, I figured.
They might bring a person, a hose, or something like that between the two, because they don't want their stuff too close to.
Right, the burning buildings.
So, so, you know, likely they would come in to the site if, you know, I don't grab a fire truck, by the way, but, you know, likely they're going to pull onto the site and stage around the buildings and not in between them, and to the extent that I, I don't know that you'll see a piece of equipment come through there as, as there's a fire going, and typically, there's a fire going, I think people are going to be out of the building before the trucks get there.
Well, maybe our car.
Unless they're like, really dedicated to what they're doing, and they're like, let me just get this one more stone kind of trimmed up here, but, so.
So it's not a major concern?
Yeah, that's the impression I got from them. They got three sides, they're good with that.
I think the waivers for reduced parking should be specific to the particular owner of Timeless Stoneworks, should the business change hands that that waiver should, should no longer be in effect, that they could come and seek approval.
Yeah, that's correct, any business would be a change, change of use, and they would have to come in front of this board or the zoning board based on their use.
Okay, and this, this new building is for warehousing only?
At this time, yes.
At this time, and there's the potential that they might build a little small showroom in the front of it, which we've shown.
Right, right, but to, to my point is, I would seek to prohibit the, the cutting, the polishing, or the cleaning of.
The entire fabrication process is done in the existing building next door.
So I would have it as a part of the conditions, I would prefer to see it prohibited within the.
Warehouse.
The particular, yes, the warehouse or the protected zone.
So once again, just so I understand, so you're saying that any, that there's no work done, no, on product outside, strictly inside the buildings?
Well, no, it should be, it should be outside of, of the protected zone.
Outside of the Conservation buffer?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, because I know you cut them, there's a lot of dust raised, and then you, you wash them down, and then, one of the last things I would, I would like to consider is a prohibition on hazardous materials outside of typical household amounts in, in the new building.
And I spoke with Mr. Ajami about chemicals as part of our application package, and he, he assured me he doesn't have any over the household quantities.
Well, that's okay, because, I mean, well, hopefully timeless stays timeless, but at some point in time, it might actually change hands, and this should be part of the conditions. Because as much as you understand them, who's to say that the future owner at some point in time wouldn't?
Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking about the work inside the building, and I, I don't know if my client's going to be comfortable with that restriction, because it's inside a closed space, it has floor drains. If he's got, you know, touch-up, cleaning, you know, or polishing a corner of something that got scratched during moving, you know, I, I wouldn't want to prohibit him from doing that. I think that's the whole purpose of having a building, is to keep everything contained inside the building, so it can be treated adequately.
Well, I, I felt that you were building this building as a warehouse space, because that's what it says on here, as a warehouse space.
Well, that's what I, my impression was warehouse showroom.
Right, warehouse showroom.
You're going to store the product in there, and all cutting and everything else was going.
Yeah, all the machinery is set up.
It's going to be in the other building.
Oh, yeah.
So why would you?
I just think it unfairly restricts them.
Just to be clear, we're going to, this building is going to be a steel frame, and we're going to install a gantry crane, so that the product that comes in in crates, five slabs, can actually be picked up efficiently and run along the frame of the building and moved around. All of the fabrication is done next door, they'd be bought, brought over one piece at a time for the fabrication process. And just to be clear, Mr. Ajami's invested a lot of money in a recycling system for the water, so the water doesn't just get dumped back onto the ground, it's cleaned and reused in the building for all of their processes.
So, again, I think this is more of a Conservation issue than it is a planning board issue, but what did the, did the Conservation see any problems with this?
No, they did not put any restrictions on it, sir.
I mean, I, I myself just can't, I mean, it is inside the building, I, I just don't, and it's contained in the building, I.
It was brought to us as a warehousing, storage for finished product, not for, for working on the product and inside of it, and, and again, it is in a prohibited zone, whether it's Conservation or not, we still have some responsibility in regards to the usage of that building within a prohibited zone.
Yeah, but I, I just can't see restricting, putting that type of restriction on there. I mean, that's what it says, but, I mean, do you, do you want Timeless Stoneworks to be timeless, or do you want to restrict them so much that they, they, they build a new building and they, and they really can't, you know, if they want to change a little bit?
Is this a warehouse for finished product, or is this supposedly a working warehouse? Is this, because it wasn't brought to us as a working warehouse, and when it was brought to us, and it was asked that, that we allow it, even though there's, there's a lot of space on this property, that it was to be used in this particular area without buffers, without, without landscaping around the side, without the twenty-five-foot required setbacks? When it was brought to us, it was brought to us as a finished product storage and stor, and showroom, it wasn't brought to us as, as that they're going to be cutting, polishing, and storing chemicals in this building, and, and that's something that, that should be taken in, into consideration.
I mean, so far, I've seen no mention of any type of containment for spills or anything else like that, so if they're going to be working in there, then there needs to be, there needs to be something that's going to contain any type, any type of spill or release.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with Mass Building Code, any overhead door, you have to put in a tight tank and a floor drain, so that's where all that would go, goes into a tight tank, which gets pumped out periodically. The tight tank is outfitted with an alarm, so as once it gets full, a light and audible alarm go off inside the building. That's Mass Building Code.
So anything that would spill would go into the floor drains and then into a tight tank?
Either floor drain or trench drain, I don't know what they have.
So it doesn't go outside?
It does not go outside.
And I'm not talking about polishing up a scratch in the stone, that's, that's not, not the issue here, I'm talking about real work, because a lot of this needs to be cut, polished, and ground, and, and.
All that work happens next door.
So what you're saying is, all of that is going to be taking place in your supposedly finished warehouse? Because that's not how you presented it to the board.
No, all that gets done in Warehouse One.
In Warehouse One?
It's, it's all calibrated, it's, it's quite a system, you should go and see it.
So, so limiting this.
They're not going to move it.
Well, we had our sidewalk, and it wasn't, it wasn't shown to us, so that we weren't offered or brought in, so.
I apologize, I should have taken you in.
But that's one of the reasons why limiting anything more than household amounts of, of chemicals in this building should, should certainly be part of the program, whether it's you or somebody after you, because who's to say a cleaning company isn't going to come in, or an automobile parts company, or something with large amounts of, of chemicals and, and storage and?
We have no problem with the chemical issue, the chemicals aren't part of the process.
And I'm not talking about cleaning up a little scratch that got put on it while it was being moved in there, but I'm talking more about the cutting and polishing of, of products to finish it up for sales and use, should all.
Raw product will be delivered into the new building, comes off of trucks, will be delivered into the new building, and as it's fabricated, it's shipped out from the existing building, goes onto a truck, and it's installed.
So what is this warehouse for, then?
The new warehouse is to house the product that is currently on the ground, that I, I assume you saw when you were doing your walkthrough. Basically, it's to cover that product, so that they can offer a wider array of product to be seen by their customers.
Okay, because, because specifically, I was told that, this board was told that it was for the finished, storage of finished product.
They may, they may fabricate it and put it in, in a small portion of it, but the, the primary reason for this.
Is just dry storage for product?
It's dry storage for raw unfinished product.
Okay. So, right, so again, there shouldn't be any, all that should be taking place in, in the other building, all the polishing, cutting, and chemical storage. That was all I had.
Anything else by any of the board members? You did say that, I, I see the rendering of what the building is going to look like. Did you want to speak about that?
Sure, the intent was to match up to the existing building. We're using a different structural system, but the dimensions of the building are the same. We originally had just a few windows, that was all we really needed, but happy to add more to comply with the bylaw. We're a little bit short of the fifteen square feet, or the fifteen percent, but we feel that this fills out the building and looks appropriate for the building's style. Also noting that there is an existing, the sales office out front is a very nice residential scale building, these buildings are set back about two-hundred-and-forty, two-hundred-and-fifty feet respectively from the road.
Okay, so you're going to have, I see, you have windows on the first level, and then there were some windows on the top, is, this is the one that, this is the way you plan on doing it, and then there's a, what's that, an awning in the front, too?
That's an awning that sticks out three feet, the building's sixty feet wide, and that awning is just over fifty-three feet.
Is that a metal awning?
It's a metal awning, it's about a ten-pitch roof, and it's made out of the same material as the roof and siding on the, on the building. Typically, that would be black to match the roof and the lower two-tone.
Is there a second floor to this?
There is no second floor.
Going to have lights on this?
On the exterior?
Yes.
There will be a few lights as we need, primarily for safety, because they have a gate that gets closed at night to protect the stone that's currently, there probably always will be a little bit of natural stone that's kept outside, but, you know, there's some cutoffs and remnants, but the gate does get closed at night.
So those lights will be on?
They'll be on a timer.
On a timer, okay.
Either a time clock or a photocell.
That's all right. Any signage going on the building?
Not that I'm aware of, he has a nice sign right out front on the road.
That's all, yeah, just asking.
One piece on that, the fire department probably will require an A, B, and C, and whatever signage they require, of course, we'll give them.
I was referring to maybe a timeless sign on the building.
Not at this time, that's a different hearing.
All right, anything else? I spoke to Tom about this before the meeting, and we have no decision written as of yet, and I think that we've just, you know, we've picked up some additional things from Mr. Shea, so I guess the, the plan is, is that, correct me, or maybe he might want to speak about it.
Yeah, if the board's comfortable with the things we talked about tonight, I'll draft a decision, we can bring it to the next meeting and look at what those conditions of the decision are, and vote a decision at that point. Amongst those, the list of waivers that we talked about, I always like to note the waivers in the decision, so the decision would have the waivers and those, those particular concerns about limiting the south side of the building to fire access only, and no work outside the building on the south side next to the bogs, it's a new building for storage of product, and. I think those are the two that we came up with, we want to just make sure that the work's going on inside the building, in, inside the buildings, the warehouse building where they store things for storage. warehouse building where they store things for storage, little polishing up if you scratch a stone.
Yeah, that's, that's on the-
But all the work done in, in the existing building, uh, and, uh, no work done outside, and nothing stored outside the property, particularly on the, uh, on the bog side of things.
Well, I'm, I'm not overly concerned about work outside. It's, it's more within the protected, in protected zone, and, uh, a limit on the amount of chemicals that can be stored in this building.
Yeah.
I don't expect that they're gonna have much for storage of chemicals in the building, but I think it's, uh, a long-term protection for the town in regards to that.
Yeah, then, uh, only household amounts of chemicals, uh, in the storage building.
All right, so, um, well, tonight, what we can do is we can close the public hearing. Um, there is no one, uh, out there, so, um, to speak, so, uh, I, I'll, um, entertain a motion to, uh, close the public hearing for, uh, Timeless Stoneworks.
I'll make said motion.
Can you, Mr. Shea, will second that motion?
So, Ellen, uh, made the motion, Mr. Shea second, uh, further discussion, uh, seeing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. Now, um, and then, uh, we'll continue this hearing, uh-
We just closed the hearing, but-
Okay.
The decision will be at the meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay, so we don't need to take a vote, but we'll, um, so on the twenty-second, we'll, we'll vote, uh, we'll read the, uh, the decision, and then, uh, uh, vote on, vote on it, take a vote to approve.
Mr. Chairman, can I keep this, or?
Sure, sure.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so we'll see you next meeting, and, and, uh, which will be, uh, March twenty-second.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, so the next, uh, public hearing, uh, continued was the application for McDonald's, um, uh, ninety-four North Main Street, and, uh, they have requested that we continue, uh, this to March twenty-second at, at seven o'clock, which would be our next meeting. So, uh, entertain a motion to continue the McDonald's hearing to March twenty-second at seven o'clock.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second.
So, Mr. Robinson and Ellen second, uh, further discussion, seeing none. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that was unanimous. All right, and, uh, in the same, on the same project, we have a, uh, signed permit, and, um, so, uh, the applicant has requested a continuance until March twenty-second for the signed per- permit for McDonald's, so entertain a motion for that.
Can you, Mr. Shea, will so make that motion?
I'll second that.
So, Mr. Shea, and then, uh, Ellen second, uh, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that's unanimous. Continue the signed permit. All right, so other business, uh, is there anything else? Oh, okay, we go with playing direct to notes, um, later, but, um, we don't have any, uh, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman in forty-eight hours, so we'll go to planning board member notes. Uh, I think Ellen wanted to say something?
Yeah, um, we're all aware of what's going on in the Ukraine, and you might wonder what you can do to kinda help us out, and I think the best way is to donate to either the Red Cross. Um, there are various places to donate money that are listed online, um, but I think the Red Cross is a great way to go, and, um, is praying for the Ukrainian people that it, it works out.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. I guess that's been on everybody's mind for the last couple of weeks now. All right, we'll go to planning directing, oh, planning direct to notes?
Yeah, uh, so, we've, uh, uh, sort of been working on our game here a bit, uh, and one of the things we've recently added, and I think I mentioned it to some of the members, is we've added to, uh, the planning board's website, uh, a section that says plans under, or applications under review by the planning board. So, you can now go to the planning board website and click in that section, and you'll see the application for site plan special permit for timeless stone, you'll see the application for special permit and, uh, a, a site plan for McDonald's and the plans that are up there. So, as we get things in, and they're in front of the board, we'll put them up on the website, so people can look at them at home. You guys can look at them at home if you want, uh, take a look at the plans and stuff like that, and as we, we're done with things, uh, we'll pull them off the website. So, uh, just trying to make plans more accessible to everybody, and just, you know, give people an idea of what's going on and, and give access to the information best we can.
That's fantastic.
And so this is under the planning board website?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, boy, that, that's really good.
Is there gonna be, like, um, uh, an archive or something like that, where people can go and review, um, older applications and, um-
Yeah, I can ask-
Uh, approval, approval letters and things like that?
I, I can ask, uh, the, 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 Jen, who's doing that sort of stuff. I know that, uh, I can find things that were on the Kingston website from five years ago by, you know, going into a little search box and searching supplement and finding things, but, uh, but I can ask about that, you know, archive and old plans and things like that.
Yeah, 'cause, um, I know, you know, with regards to, um, um, people looking for, um, you know, doing public document requests and stuff like that, it would be pretty easy to just say, hey, go check the website. Uh, it's all right there.
I know Tom's already had to work with old archived plans, so-
Yeah, I'm, 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 you know, part of the job is archaeology, trying to find stuff. So, I know Indiana Jones, uh, but, you know, there's stuff out there that I'm still looking for and finding some things. Pretty interesting stuff.
So, uh, could I just, uh-
Sure.
Kind of backtrack just a little bit?
Sure, did, did I, okay, I didn't mean to skip over you.
Yeah, no, it's, it, that, that's all right. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, make, uh, an appeal to, um, to the residents of the town, um, that we have, uh, we're coming up on the annual town meeting, and we are coming up on election day and things like that. There are a tremendous amount of openings, uh, from my understanding, on committees, um, and we need you folks in town to step up and, um, be the voice, um, that everybody needs. Um, there's, we all know that there's, that changes are afoot, and they're coming, um, between solar projects, between businesses wanting to move in, um, different things like that. We need to, we have resources that need protection. We have, uh, and as many voices and as many people participate in these things, um, that we can get, we need you guys to step up. Um, and, uh, again, election day and, uh, town meeting coming up, let's get everybody out. As many people as possible voting and, uh, having their voice heard. That's it.
If it's all right, Bruce, I just wanna remind everybody that the planning board will be holding a public meeting on March thirtieth and thirty-first at the Carver Middle High School in the-
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, um, to discuss, uh, all the new proposed planning and zoning changes, uh, that are to be presented at town meeting for your vote. Uh, we strongly recommend you show up and give us your opinion, and, uh, help us work with this, so that we can get a feel for what the public has in mind.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, under discussion, I was, I was gonna mention that, uh, next meeting will be March twenty-second, our regular, uh, meeting, um, and then, um, the, we, we did have the warrant article, uh, meetings, and they were supposed to be the beginning of March. Um, because of, uh, technical problems, we, uh, we changed that to March, uh, Wednesday, March thirtieth, and if need be, Wednesday, March thirty-first, uh, Thursday, March thirty-first, and, uh, that will be dis- uh, discussion, uh, f- about the warrant articles, and that, that'll be at the, uh, at the middle school cafeteria.
How many articles are being presented? Eight?
Uh, I don't know.
In, on the warrant, or?
No, no, in, on, through, through us.
I think there's twelve.
Okay.
I think there's seven from the RDA, uh, a couple from, one from the selectmen, one from the planning board-
Yeah.
And, uh, three petition articles, four petition articles, something like that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Tom. Um, okay, uh, n- now we go to the minutes, and we have two sets of minutes, and, um, I don't know if, uh, Tom may wanna explain, we're revoting on the January twenty-fifth meetings?
Yeah, so at our last meeting, we had talked about, we had an open meeting complaint about things that weren't in the minutes, uh, and I said, well, yeah, in the minutes, we now have a list of all the documents that have been supplied to the planning board meeting. Uh, and it turns out, when we had them up the last, uh, uh, meeting, those hadn't been amended to the minutes yet. So, if you go back to page ten of the planning board minutes for, uh, January twenty-fifth, uh, you see on the bottom half of the page documents for the one twenty-five, twenty-two planning board meeting. I thought that was in the minutes you guys looked at last time, but it wasn't, so just belt and suspenders, I wanted to make sure you guys saw it, and they were in there, uh, just to make sure that we got our bases covered, so, uh, nothing else changed in the minutes other than those additions. Uh, those are being put in February eighth minutes, and all the minutes as we go forward, uh, because that's one of those requirements, uh, under the open meeting law that we just hadn't been doing, and now they're in there.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two as edited.
I'll second that.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Ellen Sedillo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so, uh, and then, uh, we have, uh, the minutes of, uh, February eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and these are new. We hadn't voted on these before. Um, and they do have the, uh, list of documents at the end.
On page three, uh, second the last paragraph.
Make sure you're speaking in the microphone, so-
Yeah, I'll just give this to you, Tom, but it says news instead of noise, but I would like to make a motion to approve, um, the minutes with that modification.
Mine says noise.
At the la- very last word?
Oh, new, oh, the very last word.
Mm-hmm.
That's like the first one says noise.
It's like news, I must, right.
Okay, do, we have a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, February eighth. Um, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
So, you have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Mr. Robinson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. All right, uh, about a motion for adjournment.
Can you, Mr. Shea, will so make that motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shea, second by Ms. Gatsky. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and good night, everyone.